Click or support.
Yep.
There we go. Herb, you're on.
Okay, we're ready to start. Are you all hearing me?
Except Donna. Donna is still muted and she won't be able to come off of mute when she wants to talk.
I, okay, there you go.
Okay.
Donna, are you all set?
I, I'm set, but is it too noisy? Like, am I making?
No, it sounds fine.
If it gets loud, just let me know.
Okay, I will call our meeting to order. This is the Wellington Board of Education, Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, and this is a virtual meeting. First, next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if, uh, I guess we can give that. You want to stand and I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the-
And to the republic which stands-
One nation-
One nation, indivisible- with liberty, justice for all. Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is present to speak. And I will mention the fact that speakers will be recognized by me. You must identify yourself, give your name and your address, and then you can proceed with your comment. We're limiting you to about five minutes or less. The total will be 20 minutes for the whole talk. The time allotted is about 20 minutes, and at the discretion of the, uh, of me, I may go a little further to go see. Please do not address any specific, uh, personal issues. Okay, do we have any fellow, any present to speak?
If anyone is on camera and would like to speak, Peter Latencic has his hand up. Catherine, you can unmute now.
Yes, accepted.
Am I being heard?
Yep.
Yeah.
Good evening. Peter Latencic, 97 Trask Road. I came to the meeting because I was surprised to see on the agenda, Item C, Education Discussion of Mental Health Services. I attended the original meetings on this issue. I attended the meeting when the board made a decision on this issue, deciding not to pursue having this organization in the school. I listened to many of the parents that expressed similar concerns about the nature of this organization and the lack of parental controls. And I'm, I'm very concerned, and I'm not understanding why this is now before the board again, especially at a time of COVID, when we're unable to meet as we did for the original discussion and decision on this issue. I attempted to contact a number of people to come who expressed concern to me, but they seemed fearful of retribution by the school administration. I, I don't think it's right when elected representatives of the townspeople act on an issue and then it's ignored by the school administration. I respectfully support the original decision of this board and ask that it continue to be upheld until the townspeople can attend meetings again. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for your comments.
Anyone else that is wanting to speak? Sarah Smith has her hand up.
Sarah needs to be unmuted.
Yeah, I pushed unmute. She has to accept the unmuting.
Did Catherine agree?
Okay, thank you. I just noticed that we were not able to do that, and the chat is disabled as well. I just would like to express my appreciation for the start of school and what everyone has done. And I hope that we will look at every advantage and listen to what the board has to say tonight to see what we can do to do the best for our town. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sarah, just so you are aware, that is for meeting security, that you cannot unmute yourself. Anybody else on camera that would like to speak? If you're not on camera, if you could raise your hand on, by clicking Participants. There is not a ton of people on the call today, but if you would like to do that, you can do it now. I'm looking for hands to be raised. And I do not see any. There you go, Herb.
Okay, we do have another spot on the agenda for person to speak, so if you want to speak later on, you can do that. This is the chairman's report, and I'd like to, uh, report that, that we have made every effort to open the Wellington Public Schools to, uh, provide a safe and a health environment for our students and provide educational services and programs that they need. We've opened our schools and have made provisions for all contingencies due to COVID-19 pandemic. Various models are in place to provide our students with learning. And we have on-campus learning, hybrid learning, and remote learning. And the Wellington Public Schools is also prepared to shift to a different model if necessary, depending on how things go with the pandemic. And at the same time, we'll be supplying the highest level of access to, of instruction possible to our students. I want to say also that there are a lot of people involved in opening schools, and every one of them deserves a lot of credit. Also, RF is to provide safe and healthy and quality education and a sound environment for our students, has been in collaboration with Eastern Holiday's Health District, and also the Connecticut Department of Education. Phil Stevens, our superintendent, will give us more information on opening school later on the agenda. With that, we'll move to the next item on agenda, which is communications. I do not have any communications. Is this any written communication this time? Phil, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay, if not, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, which includes staffing, Election Day use of Hall Memorial School, enrollment update, Fire Marshal report, the CES roof update, and update on the Wyndham Public Schools. Okay, Phil, can you enlighten us on some of these items?
Making sure it sums up that you can all hear me, okay? All right, thank you. So I'm gonna just try and fly through some of these things. Staffing. We've, obviously, this is a, um, a, a, a meeting where we announce all the hires we've had. So Stephanie Knight is our, our new Food Service Director. We hired, we posted and hired Leslie Belcito for kindergarten. We had a late resignation for someone that took an administrative position. And we hired Clary Pass for second grade. We hired Hannah Wood for a long-term sub for Bryn Lipstrew for grade three. We hired Nikki Mainz for Special Education at Hall School, and she replaces Deb Callahan, who moved to grade five math. We hired Stacy Mosley for Special Education at Center School. We hired Amy Lord as a paraprofessional. We hired Danielle Eldridge as a paraprofessional. We have Katherine Alon Polmo, who's temporarily in grade six math. And then we hired five of the six utility positions to, to date, and that is Mitchell Hudon, Kristy Page, Janina Eldridge, Stephanie McFarland, and Ally Neizer. I will say that all are connected to either the community already or to our staff, and I'll speak more about those utility positions later in the meeting. The B, the Election Day use of HMS. The election department approached me, and because of all the requirements for the election that they have to, to maintain, they asked if they could use the Hall School gym for the Election Day. It is only going to interfere that school day. But because we have the capacity to quickly plan for and move to a remote learning, if we're not already there by November, it was, didn't seem to be an issue, so I have approved that and will be announcing to our parents that November 3rd will be a remote day for, for the district. And I, I shouldn't say district. We're planning for just Hall School at this point, and we're planning to have our Center School students go to the physical building if they're able to do so that day. I'm gonna keep moving, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I want to give you an enrollment update. We are currently at 414 students. This is where we tend to have a lot of movements. We have 23% of our population is learning remotely right now. They had the opportunity to choose that, and we have about 23% learning remotely. Our average class size right now, because of the remote learners, is 12. So that means if you have a class of 16, four of your learners would be remote and 12 would be in, in class. And we had 12 fam, uh, 12, not 12 families, 12 students moved to homeschooling. They did not want to do the remote learning provided by the district, but many of them, if not all of them, intend to return to the district once COVID is, is gone. So you lose 12 students in that manner. So that's our enrollment update at this point. The, we, oh, annually, we receive a Fire Marshal report, and the Fire Marshal report this year, again, it's, it's usually very good. It was good again this year. We had a couple items at Center School that needed attention. One was the attic above the kitchen. It's a storage area. Sometimes it quickly turns into a, a dumping ground. It's, it's a, a hard space to share. And so it has to be cleaned out. So that is one area that the Fire Marshal indicated that we needed work. And the other was just a simple wire that was located through someplace that shouldn't have been located. So that wire will be moved. But overall, the report was, was good. Catherine, I just got a text from someone that is trying to get into the meeting. I'm not sure if you see them or not.
There's no one in the waiting room.
Okay.
Now, someone just came in.
Look at that magic. The last item was, or, sorry, I might not be the last item. The next item was the Center School roof and the Hall School roof. It should say both, and it says Center School. I'm currently at a standstill with this project, and, and as you can imagine, the last three or four months of, of COVID work has kind of come to fruition today, as we welcome students back. Once, and I've talked to the first elected one about this, she asked, once we are rolling with the reopening and things are smooth, I will divert my attention back to the roof project. Obviously, this is a large undertaking. I've said that from the get-go. Because of the grant reimbursement project, I did send an email to the Board of Finance and said they're wel-, you know, they're welcome to, if they want to hire a company to take that over. I would love to see that, but it, it costs significant amount of money, and otherwise, it's, it's a wait until I can, can get to that. So that is, at this point, until we're operating efficiently under all the new COVID protocols, which there are a, a significant number of protocols, that is on hold at this point still. F, just making sure I don't miss something. F is the update on our, our return. And typically, I, I want to make sure you all understand, I did not do this this year. Typically, I would invite the board to our opening meeting. We were at our capacity for Zoom, and I didn't want to chance that we crashed our, our Zoom. We did have a, a good opening last week. We had five days professional development. And for the staff, we're on a variety of topics. We had Dr. Ravit Stein come from East Con. She presented on trauma-informed instruction. We had Zoom meet and greets for students, lots of training for staff on health and safety, training on instructional practices, and connected to Zoom and remote learning. And, you know, we gave teams time to prepare for all of those challenges that they, they had to be starting today. I want to thank the administrative team, obviously, and the teachers. They spent a lot of time preparing and a lot of nervous nights. I know that this last week was very stressful for several of our staff, many of our staff members and families. We had a very clean, crisp opening. Today, it was not perfect, but it went very, very well. Obviously, our administrative team constantly reflects on things. We're gonna change a couple things quickly to improve. Specifically, we talked about pickup. And because we, as you can imagine, we had a lot of families opt out of transportation, and we have a lot of cars, almost half of our student body being picked up and not taking transportation. So it's a lot of cars that we are cycling through, but it went well. And in the end, you know, the students' smiling faces this morning as they returned to school made it all worthwhile. They were very excited to be back. Our staff was, was excited to see them this morning. I spent a lot of time in the school today and was very, very happy. So that is what I have on the superintendent's report.
Okay. Are there any, any questions? Elena?
I have two questions, actually. The first one, Phil, you said 23% of kids, they chose to study remotely. So 23% of 414 is 95.22. So can you give us exact number, the exact number?
I think you just hit it. The latest I had, I think, was 96.
96, okay. Then I have, then, then I have another question. I have a real, we handled the situation with the roof. I think we really put our town down by not moving, by not putting the roof on for too long, while we had money, while we were commission- to inform Board of Finance that you, that you are unable to do it. So I think we should really learn from the situation and never be in it again, because at this point, Phil, it looks like you took too much responsibility on yourself, and you literally decided not to move on with that question. I think if you saw in June that you cannot handle the situation with the roof, you had to inform us back in June, so we would hire someone. It doesn't cost crazy amount of money. It's a two-year somewhere. There could be more developing. There could be big problem, big issues. So I don't want to go into what I really think about it, but I think there is a big problem. And I think we maybe, either we learn on it and never be in that situation again, or we have to come back and just really find the, you know, consequences to make sure that it doesn't happen again. So I think that was a great failure on our side. It's okay, although I think it's totally okay to admit that we cannot handle it all. Totally okay. To say, I'm sorry, I'm overwhelmed. I have too much. We need to hire. Let's hire. Because extra 15, 20,000 will not make a difference in a million, a million spending for the roof. But if we lose that building, that would be a big problem. It's also a shelter for our town. So it's not just related, that building does not relate only to school. It's also related to the whole town. So I would appreciate if we really learn from that situation and do not miss the right moment to inform that you cannot handle it. I would really appreciate if it would be fixed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Elena. I can't see everyone, so does anyone else have their hand up at this time to ask a question?
Donna, that's her.
Donna?
Yes, um, a couple of things. Part of it is, is the roof, and, and with anything. Sometimes we get hammered. This is a very unusual year, but this is the second summer that it wasn't taken care of. So in the future, I mean, I know sometimes things happen, but we, we can't be left in the dark, or you have to say blatantly, look, guys, you know, I have to do all these things and the roof. I can't do all. And then put it back to the board to make a decision of, you know, who helps out. There's plenty of talented people in the town that might have been willing to volunteer. Maybe not. Maybe they'd want to be paid for it or hire somebody. But we want to make sure that our assets are preserved and that it's a healthy environment for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else have a comment they'd like to make at this time regarding the superintendent's report? If not, we'll move on to new business, Phil. We have the minutes.
Financial report, Herb.
Uh, yeah, the financial, uh, financial report. A budget for 2019, 2020, and transfers.
So I, I made the 1920 budget update. Donna has used the new software. Actually, sorry, this is still a little software. We have an update on where we believe the, the budget is gonna close, and just going by program. And once we make you approve B tonight, the, the, it, the transfers, we will put the narrative underneath each of those lines for why. So Program 1, that shortfall was due to a grant that needed to be moved to Hall School, and that was because of the free and reduced numbers at Hall School. There was, the Chromebooks came out of that account, which you approved, and the Septic Project came out of that account. So that's the shortfall at Hall, at Center School, sorry. Program 2 was the excess, and again, they received the benefit of the grants. And then, if you remember, we had open positions there, Spanish, science. We had a turnover there in, in library, and we ended up receiving, hiring some folks at a lower rate. So you see a, a big excess there. Typically, we would not leave those positions unfilled. They were shortage areas, number one. And number two, we thought we were gonna have a significant shortfall in special ed, which is why I held that. Program 3, the shortfall is because of outplacement tuition and transportation. Number 4, Program 4, transportation. The excess is there is because of the renegotiated rates and the fuel savings. Program 5 is basically spent, there was very little left there, in health services. Program 6 is curriculum staff development. Not all the professional development could actually happen because of, of COVID. Program 7, utilities balanced out in the end. We believe we were a little favorable there because we were out of school and that the electric, electricity, we didn't use as much. Program 8 balanced out. There was some hiring savings under operations and maintenance and, and less summer hours. And then Program 9 was system-wide support, and, and I'm in there. Obviously, I did not travel as much or to submit mileage. So that was significant in the budget. And then Program 10, the health insurance, where we, when we built the budget, we believed it was gonna be at 14. It came in to, at 2. And after the dust settled for who was taking insurance and not, there's, there's an excess there. That brings the total education balance remaining to $459,000. Again, we thought that was gonna be a huge number that was going to be coming or going into the special education accounts. It was not needed because of the, the, the grants and the application. And a lot of this was because of COVID. So not a typical year of budgeting, for sure, and what was spent. If I go to, can I go to budget, item B, Herb?
Yes, go ahead.
The budget transfers. After speaking, and I told you this, after speaking to the attorney and the proper way to do this, we believe we should be balancing out the two programs that are in the negative so that even though the ba-, the budget is, is okay, the total budget's okay, that we did not have any programs negative. And those are where we would put narratives underneath all of the lines to explain why was there's an excess or if there was a shortfall. And the transfer request would be, and I, I was trying to find out today, did you get a copy of this in your packet? It would basically just be the request for, for the numbers that you see in the negative. So both of these would come from Program 2. There would be a transfer from Program 2 of $54,692 to cover the shortfall at Center School. And there would be a transfer of $19,754 to cover the special education shortfall. And so you would need to make a motion for that.
Okay, that's a new transfer. Okay, so that's an action item. And we'll entertain a motion to, to accept the transfers, if you want to. Can I hear a motion?
This is Michelle Tannen. I move that we transfer $19,754 out of the special education line and also $54,692 out of the CES Elementary School Education line.
That's where it's gonna go to, Michelle.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. It's all going into CES?
You're gonna, the, the shortfall of $54,692 and the shortfall of $19,754 would all come out of Hall School.
Okay, so let me start again. I would like to recommend, no, I move that we transfer two sums into, I've programmed to the HMS Middle School. From, I'm sorry, from the HMS school line in the amount of $54,692 in the CES Education line and in the amount of $19,754 in the special education line to cover the shortfalls.
I will second that motion. Laura Rodriguez.
Okay, Laura seconded. Any further discussion to the motion on the budget transfers? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and also raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all who oppose? Abstentions? Okay, so voted. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Non-lapsing account.
So then I sent you the non-lapsing account statute. The statute trumps our policy. Our policy needs to be updated. Last year, they approved that you can transfer, if you have excess funds in your budget, you can make a request to your Board of Finance to transfer money into, into what's called a non-lapsing account. And that non-lapsing account is basically held for educational purposes and unanticipated expenditures such as outplacements, such as COVID. And we currently have $30,552 in there. That would not cover the transportation probably for an outplacement at this point in time. Any request, it, that, it would basically, so the process would be if you request the 2% amount, that request would go to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance would then approve it or, or deny it. If they deny it, it's, it's a, there's nothing you can do about it. If they accept it, the money would go into the non-lapsing account. For the Board of Education to access that money, if it is under $20,000, the Board of Finance, we, the board would have to make a request to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance could approve it. If it's over $20,000, the Board of Ed would make the request to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance would then have to send it to they would have to approve it, and it would have to go to town meeting. So if you wanted to request payment back for something such as an outplacement that costs $100,000, it would have to go through the Board of Finance and- that costs $100,000, it would have to go through the Board of Finance and through the, the, um, town meeting process. So my recommendation is, is that you ask, because you're, um, returning such a large sum of money and know that you have significant COVID expenses to, uh, cover, um, that were unbudgeted. My suggestion, my recommendation is that you request the Board of Finance to move 2% of the 1920 budget that you are return, and it's of the total budget. It's about $170,000 that you'd be requesting. So it'd be 2% of the entire 1920 budget that you'd be requesting move into the non-lapsing fund to cover COVID-related expenses. It doesn't matter if you added the COVID-related expenses line, because anything, you'd have to ask them for it anyways. And that would be my recommendation. So it'd be 2%, again, you could just ask for the 2%, but no, it's around $170,000 you'd be requesting.
So once the money, once the money is, oh, go ahead with the motion, yeah.
Okay. Um, I make a motion that, um, we recommend to the Board of Finance that we take 2% of the 1920 budget figure and move it into the non-lapsing account, and that would be approximately $170,000.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Michelle?
Michelle, I second that motion.
Okay, I second it. Uh, any discussion relative to the motion? Elena?
Yes, Elena Testa. I have a question to fill. I just probably don't understand it very well. So if we request that money, why do we need it now? Do we have a real need now? Or why can't we wait when the need arises and then we ask for that money? That's, that's my, I just don't understand it. I would like to understand that question, because we really don't know how long it's going to be in school. Why do we need the money if there is a big question that we will ever use them? So I mean, just, just the question. What do, what can you say about it?
So if you, if you don't request it, the money goes back into the general fund. And so anytime you have, uh, you know, a project or something that you have to go back to, uh, that group either way, to the Board of Finance. But if you, if you put it into the non-lapsing fund, you know they have a cushion. If you have an outplacement, move in tomorrow. Or, uh, I'm going to give you another, a different example. You have a family of five move into town, and they're all magnet school students, and you have, uh, a $25,000 bill that, for magnet students that you do not have budgeted. Those are the types of things that you would want to, uh, have a cushion for. Um, we, you don't really have a cushion right now at all. And this is one of those things where, when you see districts that have a placeholder for insurance, which we do, uh, Donna recommends that, it used to be two placeholders, we have one. Most districts have a placeholder for special education for an outplacement that, that, you do not. So this is basically would be your placeholder for if something happens, eh, it's through special education or through, if you have, continue to have COVID, you know, related expenses, that, um, you don't have budgeted right now. The utility folks are an example of people you don't have budgeted right now. And so we can cover it through other things for a period of time, um, but I don't, I can't guarantee for, you know, beyond that December date.
Thank you, Elena. Phil, they've never refused us, have they, uh, on that fund?
I believe, I believe they did two years ago, but I, I, I want to, uh, be sure about that.
Yeah, I can't remember when, yeah. Now, is there any chance that we can increase that 2%? Or is that by state mandate, state law?
Statute is 2%.
Yeah.
Actually, you can't go over, um, I think it's 3% of your budget is the, is the number that you can't go over. So, um, meaning it, of the, you know, you can't exceed 3% of the most current fiscal year budget, which we would not be doing. Laura has her hand up, Herb.
No, at the present time, we cannot use that money. It was in last year's budget. And instead of returning it to the town, we're, we're putting it in this 2% account.
You would have to request that, correct?
Yeah. But before we put it in the account, do we have anything that we need or should have and could use some of that money for?
Absolutely. You can't use it now. It's, that time has passed.
Yeah.
Which we knew it was going to be a, a good sum of money, and we also knew that there was potential that there was going to be unbudgeted things, which is why we did not go on a spending spree. If you remember, the thing, the, the one item that I came to you that asked for was those Chromebooks. Uh, they were ordered as soon as they were approved. Actually, they're still backordered, there's, we're waiting for Chromebooks to come in. There's a, basically a, a shortage across, uh, the entire world to try and find Chromebooks in bulk. But that's, you can't spend that money now. Laura has her hand up, Herb.
Okay, any other questions? Any, anyone else have a comment?
Um, I, I have a, I have a question, Laura Rodriguez. And this is clarification, so, um, I just want to make sure that I understand, this is money that was budgeted for last year that was approved for the schools, but we didn't use it. And if we don't use money that the town has agreed to budget for the schools, it goes back to the town, and the finance committee decides how it's used. And what you want to do is take this money that the town has already said should be for the schools and put it in a non-lapsing account so that we can continue to use it for these unforeseen expenses. And with COVID, we've got all sorts of things. Is that, is my understanding correct?
It is correct. The, the, they still have a, a bit of what I'll call a fail-safe. So you do, you don't have discartes blanche with this. You, so if it goes into that non-lapsing fund, you still have to, uh, and, and the last time this happened, we put in $6,000, I think it was last year, we asked for them to put $6,000 in, and I gave them a specific purpose, and that was a special education audit. They approved it, and then we turned right around and used that money for the special education audit. So, but you are correct. You still have to ask them to use that money, though, um, to, to be able to move forward with it.
How long does that money have to sit in the, uh, account? And can the, uh, Board of Finance simply pull that out and put it in the general fund?
I don't believe they can do that.
It could be in, in there for...
But, and I also don't think, yeah, timeframe that I have seen in our, in the statute or the policy, Herb, about when it has to be used, but...
So do we have a motion on the...
The motion, we have a motion, a second, yes. We're at the discussion stage at the present time. Anyone else have a, a comment or a discussion question they want to ask, Phil? Anyone else?
Anderson has a hand.
I, I can't, I can't see your hands, so you just have to speak up.
Okay.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
I would, I would think this would be a good idea based on the fact that, at, um, the August 12th or August 11th meeting, I believe, you, Phil, um, presented us with a large amount of costs that would be, uh, through December at least for, for COVID-related items that, uh, were beyond our regular budgeted amount. So I would, best case scenario, if we continue go, being in school, I would think we were going to need this money, or, or at least want to have it as insurance in case we do. So I would hope that the Board of Finance would keep that in mind if we put this in place.
I have a question, too. Have we, um, Anne Grosjean, have we gotten any money from the state yet for COVID, Phil? Or the federal?
It's, it's in my report for the update. I will tell you that we've given a number, um, but we were given a number in, in April, and we haven't seen a dime.
So we can't count on that for sure, so it's a good idea to have another way to pay the bills.
You would, i- if we get that money, uh, and we're approved, I'm going to tell you, it's, it's right now, we're approved for, um, money from last year and from what's coming up, about, for about $200,000. But I will, and, and I'm getting ahead of myself here, but I will tell you that, but when the last, um, award came out, there was significant discrepancies between towns. So some towns of 1,000 kids got $100,000, and some towns of 1,000 kids got a million. And so, um, there was significant discrepancies between towns, and they're trying to iron that out. And again, talking about learning as you go here, they're trying to do the same thing. I don't think they're going to put money in our, our pool until they know it's, it's going to be good. The expectation is if that money gets there, um, it can only be applied for COVID-related expenses. Um, and that we would obviously access that money first. But in any other year, uh, you don't, you typically don't, don't have this excess. You don't have a $400,000 return. Uh, that's a huge amount of money. And so if there's any year, even take COVID aside, that you could do that and, and, you know, basically cover yourself for special education, or, um, a ventilation project that's probably going to have to happen at Hall School, those are, you know, things that would make sense to me. That's why I recommend. You're welcome.
Okay. Are we ready to move on the, uh, motion? Okay, eh, does anyone want the motion read back? Okay. This is on the non-lapsing fund policy. All those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and just raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Hands are up.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so voted. Okay, Phil, we'll move on to the...
Can I ask, please, a point of, point of order? There's a, somebody's got some background noise going on. Catherine, can, or Phil, whoever's those, can you double check to make sure everyone's muted?
Catherine, can you mute, cancel, please?
Okay, is it okay now, Michelle?
Yep, thank you.
Seems fine.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay, I, item 7D, the budget update, 2020, 2021.
So, uh, this is, uh, based on the new software, so there's, this is, even though it shows up in our, uh, in your program still, uh, this is our first report that I've received out of our new software, which is, is great. Uh, I just want to go through what some of those numbers look like and why. Center School numbers, you see the, the balance remaining right now of 144. We have an open kindergarten position there, remember? Because of our numbers, I did not hire someone. And so I left that, that position unfilled because our numbers didn't support that at the time. So that's why that number's so high right now. The middle school is, is a little lower on the program two at 35, because the two people that we hired were, uh, folks that had some more experience. So typically, we, um, budget for some of the bachelor step one or master step one. These folks came in and they were internal moves, um, that applied, so they, if, there was a higher salary, so it brought that number down. Obviously, special education, the outplacements, none of those transportation bills, none of those things have happened yet. We, uh, get those as they come in, uh, and that's why you see a, a large sum of money in the balance remaining for program three. Program four, we, uh, we basically encumber all of the, the financial, um, finances for that entire program at the beginning of the year. It's in the negative because we always have the fuel reimbursement from Region 19. Uh, it's just the way it turns out, but I'm not worried about that at all. Health services is already in the negative, um, and that's really because of all of the additional supplies that we have had to order for school. That's all the, the protective equipment, including masks, um, for students, for teachers, shields, there's all, all sorts of stuff. I will tell you that, um, I don't have a sense yet of how quickly those things are going to go. We made an estimate, uh, based upon our number of students and our staff, of how many masks we would use, how many face shields we would use, um, how many gowns we would use, and depending on if we remain in school and how long we remain in school and how often those things are used, we may need to buy more. We are hoping the numbers that we ordered are going to get us through November. But, um, obviously, that is, uh, we're going to have to order some more. So, you know, at some point, if we remain in school. So we did not order, we didn't think it made sense to order for the entire year. So we ordered to get us through November, what we believe was November, which is why you already see a shortfall there. That is one area, again, not budgeted. So that, in, in, in the negative already. Uh, program six, curriculum and staff development, obviously, uh, we haven't spent anything there yet as far as our professional development goes. We encumbered all of the items in program seven for utilities. Uh, op, operations maintenance, program eight, um, the supply, the supply, supplies for the district for cleaning, a lot of those items are in there. And that line is significantly overdrawn already, even though it shows $4,000 in the account, in the total account. One of those lines is cleaning supplies for the district. Uh, we anticipate, again, we had to figure out, we did some math, how much do we think it's going to get us through? We believe we're around November for that material as well. So cleaning all the desks, cleaning at night, all of those, uh, chemicals that we need to disinfect and clean, um, we're hoping going to get through, uh, and hand sanitizer soap is going to get us through November. Again, we will place another order if it looks like we're going to be extending beyond that, and we're going to be able to stay in school. But we didn't want to have loads of excess sitting around, because I don't think that's prudent to do. Program nine is system-wide support. We have not done, the school choice is someone that goes to a magnet school. We get a bill, five, six, $7,000 per student. You are obligated to pay it. And we did just have, uh, several more students, and I just alluded to that a couple minutes ago, move into district who are going to magnet schools. So a chunk of that 74,000 is going to be applied to school choice, and it could potentially be up to half. The other, uh, chunk of change there that's in that is like Microsoft licenses and things like that. And then program 10, fringe benefits and substitutes, uh, Donna will true that up after we have all the hiring paperwork that we've, uh, has come in. And it's really about, uh, the health benefits. And we've been significantly lucky with the people we have hired not needing benefits so far. They have their own, and that is just luck of the draw. So we've been lucky around that. So that's, uh, where the total budget is right now, with the balance remaining, uh, and the percent remaining. We should have a pretty solid picture next month about our chemical usage, about our PPE usage, uh, and about benefits. And, and those are some of the things that are really going to give us a sense of, uh, where are we going to be and how much money are we going to, uh, need to transfer, um, from other things, or how we have to tackle those problems. Questions about 2021 budget?
Okay, if not, we'll move to item E, the COVID-19 reopening expenses and grants.
Hand raised, Herb?
Pardon?
Donna, hand...
Okay, go ahead.
Laura and I both have our hands up, so don't forget her. Um, a couple of things. One is, did we ever find out what our minimum budget requirement was for 2021?
I, I did not.
Okay, the, the, the other thing is, um, is there a way that the expenses that are COVID-related, because they may end up in, in different accounts, um, that they're being flagged or tagged or in some way so that the system can be sorted, so that when it is time for reimbursement, that it is clear that nothing's getting missed? Because some things may be in supplies, and some things may be in, you know, the medical equipment, and they be, may be in various places, and we would not want them overlooked.
Yeah, so when we, um, submit any of our bills right now, we're telling, uh, accounts payable, Tish. If it's COVID-related, we're also tracking on that, um, sheet that we have, um, eh, that I shared last time, and, and, and we'll update that as we go. Uh, one of the things that we updated was, you know, not ordering six tents, we ordered four carports. The cost was actually a little bit cheaper, so we'll update that as we go. But any of our cleaning supplies, anything that's extra COVID-related, we tell Tish, and she flags it. Um, and we have to do that, because when we submit for reimbursement from the state... uh, if it's there, um, we have to show that it was COVID-related.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else?
Laura has her hand up.
I just, mine, mine is just a quick question. Um, and, and I understand that, I, I absolutely understand and agree with, um, buying the PPE and cleaning supplies through part of the year, not the whole year, because we don't know what's going to happen. But I guess my concern stemming from the spring is what happens if we stay in school and when it's time to buy more, we have troubles, um, buying more PPE at that time. Like, do you foresee that being an issue or do you think that the supply chain looks pretty good on that?
There are certain items that the supply chain has been challenging. Um, one of them has been dispensers. Uh, we just got a whole bunch of touchless dispensers that just came in, um, and literally, I think the Friday before school started. Um, but the PPE is actually, uh, a little bit easier to find than it was before. And the state has stepped up and really said, look at if you're stuck finding PPE, there's a number I can call and they'll give us leads on things. We are also being thoughtful about some of the things we're doing, uh, and, and creative. We have a, um, a dispenser, uh, at both schools on a music stand, uh, which sound, uh, uh, you know, a, a hand sanitizer. And one of the reasons we did that is because they were trying to charge a thousand dollars for a stand, um, which was crazy. So it just depends on what you, you know, you're looking for, but I'm not concerned about the chemicals or the materials, but we aren't going to wait until November to order either. So we're going to know in four weeks where, what we've used, um, how much longer we think our stock will last us and we'll be placing an order. My plan is October one, um, if we, you know, you know, October eight, whatever, around then to place that next order.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Phil, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, do you want to move on?
Yep. So I'll talk about the, the COVID nineteen reopening expenses and the grants. I already said the grants, you know, we've been, any, any communication that we get from the state, um, about the money, we were supposed to get sixty thousand the first time and one forty the next, um, haven't seen any of yet, but we can, will continue to apply for it. Uh, I will let you know if that money comes in, obviously, because that's how we're going to pay for, uh, the expenses, it has to be our priority. Um, I will tell you, I, I went back through and I didn't send it to the board, um, but the, the working document I shared last time, the items that have come in, uh, that, that we made some, um, estimates on, one was the utility staff I gave you last time, talking about their salary and insurance, uh, and I thought we were going to be around, you gave me, uh, the ability to hire, um, staff, and I think it was up to a hundred and four thousand was the number, I believe it was around that. Uh, and right now it looks like, um, even if I fill the vacant position and they're at top, uh, salary and benefits, I would only be spending sixty-eight thousand dollars. So, uh, that is really good news. Um, we've hired some folks that have really wanted to step up and help and I greatly appreciate the work they've done. Um, I told them they could be wearing running shoes because they are constantly going and today was a good example of that. Cleaning buses, uh, you know, sanitizing bathrooms, doing touch services, delivering lunches, um, covering, uh, as a paraprofessional, they are the catch-all and they're doing it. So we are definitely getting our money's worth for those folks and we are under budget on that at this point. Uh, some of the other things I want to touch upon were, I, I sent you after the last, um, meeting, the next day, I want to place the order for the tents, uh, and they can no longer get them and the reason is really because everyone's scooping up tents for COVID testing, uh, and they have priority over us and so they, they also can't get the parts fast enough for them. So it was quick change gears, um, and the change gears for us was, um, carports. So we have ordered four carports, we have to get permits for them, uh, they have to have specific wind load, snow load. I'm working with the building department on that. The engineered plans are coming in, um, and we're, we're kind of, just kind of waiting for those things to, to, to arrive. Uh, there's, it's going to be two at center school on the basketball court and two at , uh, hall school on the back basketball court. The good thing about the carports that's better than tents is you can actually rake the roof of them and leave them out in winter time and, um, we'll have, be able to have a space for mask breaks if it's, you know, drizzling out or it's raining out, uh, it'll be a good space for them. Um, the other thing we're doing, just because we did not want to drill into the ground on those, um, Troy, uh, our public works director, found out that we can buy concrete blocks very cheap, um, and we're going to anchor them to the blacktop on, using concrete blocks instead of drilling down into the, um, blacktop, which is where our septic is. So let's not go there. All right? Um, those were, uh, we, uh, were planning on sixty-five hundred dollars each, those are coming in about sixty-three hundred dollars each. The only other items that I can report on, because I don't have information in on tutors or long-term subs, um, with the ventilation, we're still waiting on quotes for, um, the whole school project. Uh, I'm hoping that, uh, and, and that is basically that the lower, uh, the wings at both wings at hall school, remember, did not have any ventilation, nothing in the ceiling, um, and nothing, no exhaust or intakes in classrooms. So we have fans in those windows exhausting air. It's actually working quite well right now, um, and we know that because when I went in this weekend, the temperature in the classrooms was down to sixty-nine degrees, which is actually really good. Typically if the air gets in there and it just holds, it, it stays humid. So those, um, energy recovery ventilation units would be inserted into every room that would have to go to, through CIP. Once I get those quotes and they're going to be reconvening, I guess, um, and at some point I'm going to have to come to the board and say, do you approve me asking for these items? Because you need, windows open works until it's cold out. And then when windows open, windows need to be closed, you need a solution because you need ventilation. Again, I mentioned the custodial supplies is over budget, the PPE is currently over budget. Um, and we also, because of conversations and concerns with, um, just talking to the union and some of the concerns and what other districts were doing, there was a request, and a reasonable request for teachers to have shields at their tables, um, for specific times, uh, like when students take their masks off to eat or if they were working one-to-one and in very close range, under that six feet, four feet, they could be at the table with the student and use that shield. Um, we've got a really good deal from a local, uh, distributor out of East Hartford. Um, they were sixteen dollars each, um, and so we distributed those. Most people are paying eighty dollars for shields, we paid sixteen. Um, and the last thing was we, uh, because we're promoting outdoor education, because, uh, at this point in time, we know outdoors is this really safe space for everyone. It also allows staff and students to take off their masks as long as they're socially distant. Um, we bought, uh, what I'm going to call bleacher cushions, sit-upon, whatever you want to call them, every student has a little foam, something to sit on, um, and, uh, it's, uh, they were already using them today, which is great. And I will get to, uh, at a further point in the meeting, I'll talk to an outdoor, about an outdoor space where they also can use those things. So that's kind of the update on the reopening expenses, uh, and the grants. Again, I'll keep you, uh, apprised as I get, learn more about the grants, um, but I would love to see some money come actually to our accounts for that. Elena has her hand up, Herb.
Elena?
Elena, thank you. I have a question to you, Phil. You, you just said we have, you found desk shields. You meant desk shields for sixteen dollars? For the desk?
It's like-
For the actual desk?
So, um, it's kind of, I don't know how to explain it. It's basically, it's a clear picture, um, a, a, a large, like if you took a piece of cardboard and you folded it in, in two sections and it would sit on the table, but it has windows through it. Um, I wish I had one here. It, it, it basically sits, it allows me to sit close to a student, they put it on their table, the teacher table, and then the student sits on the other side of the table and we can see each other, but we can be under that six feet. So that's what we, what it, what it is. Does that make sense?
But then why-
I wish I had a-
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for interrupting. So my question is, uh, why can't we buy full students and to get rid of masks for at least a bigger portion of the day? For sixteen dollars, we can afford to put those shields on every chair's desk instead of the masks?
You were breaking up, but I think you were asking, can we put those on student desks and allow them to remove their masks? The answer is no, students have to, and staff have to wear their masks. The only time they're allowed to take off their masks in school is when they're eating or, or drinking, but every other time, um, they're supposed to be wearing their masks all day long.
But what, if they're sitting at the desk and not moving, if they get up, they need a mask, mask, but if they're sitting at the, behind the shield at their desk, is there some, um, governance requirement for it or?
Yes, there's an executive order that requires, and it's, it's part of the, um, plan that came out from the state, all students and staff are required to wear a mask in school, in school. Yes. Even if you're behind a shield, even if you're in a bubble, even if you're, you just, you have to wear a mask.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to new business, the approval of the minutes of July fourteenth. This is an action item. We will require a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll do second, Cunningham. I move the-
Michelle?
Minutes from our July fourteenth regular meeting.
Thank you.
Elena, that's the second.
Okay, seconded by Elena. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, raise a hand, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? None, this, motion is passed. Okay, we have approval of minutes of August eleventh, uh, twenty twenty. This also is an action item, we need a motion to accept the minutes.
Elena, go ahead.
Okay.
Um, Anne Groschen, I move that we accept the, we have approved the minutes of August eleventh, two thousand twenty.
Okay, thank you, Ann.
Elena, that's the-
Elena, Elena?
I seconded.
Elena's seconded? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Oh, aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion is passed. Okay, we're down to new business, item, item C, discussion of London Public Schools Behavioral and Mental Health Services. That's on the agenda. We had a question earlier from, uh, one of our members of town regarding how, how this got on the agenda and, and we have a general policy that if a board member wants something put on the, on the agenda, uh, if we, uh, we try to accommodate them and that's, that's why it, it is on the agenda at the present time. Also, there are other reasons for it. This has been a, uh, something this board has addressed, uh, over the last several months, but we haven't addressed some of the, the issues, basic issues as a board. And, uh, the reason I agreed to put it on the agenda was to, uh, set up some meetings so that we could, uh, discuss the behavioral and, uh, mental health services that we have in the school at present time and also address the, uh, need for it. And, uh, and also I felt that, uh, we couldn't possibly do this in one meeting, so, uh, we had multiple meetings, uh, that was hoping to have, have us address this. Also, we could bring the, uh, the, uh, company and the, uh, Community Health Center, uh, incorporated in and have them give us a, an in-depth, uh, accounting of what they, uh, what they do when they do, uh, go into schools. And then the third meeting would be a, uh, further discussion on the part of the, of the board, but, but there was one of the rationales behind, behind this. It's, it's something that is, uh, has been on the minds of most of the board members for an extended period of time and some people very, feel very strongly about it both ways. So is that, uh, for, I'll ask Phil to, uh, come in at this time. Do you have any comments in this, Phil? Uh, I know you, you had some suggestions too that-
Yeah.
You might want to hear.
I think one important piece around this, because, you know, it's been clear that the board is, is divided on this, um, is, is to find out if there's information or, or questions that the board wants answered. And one thing I, I said to Herb was, I thought it was important that the discussion tonight was just focused around what questions do you want answers to? Um, and, you know, if we can identify some of those questions, um, and even if, it doesn't have to happen, the question ha, has to be submitted tonight, but if there's a set of questions that the board, um, wants information for, um, that we could collect that information and then, uh, at the, you know, and I say we, it might be me, it might be my staff, it might be someone else providing a presentation, um, you know, uh, so that the board has the answers and the information and the public too, so it's transparent. So you have your answers and you know the types of, uh, whether it's mental health, whether it's behavioral services, whether it's, uh, items around social emotional learning, which they're, they all could be com, uh, combined into a pool. But if you could identify those questions, it would allow the board, I think, to move forward, um, and, and get some information so that everybody has the same information and you're on the same page.
Okay, Phil? Any other comments?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm, and I don't know if you want the board to chime in, if they have questions or, I'm not sure how you want to proceed.
Well, I, I, I would have, uh, every board member, if they have a suggestion or comment to make, to do it at this time.
Tracy has her hand up, Herb.
Who does?
Tracy.
Stacy, okay. I can't see you, Stacy, so I-
Okay, I understand.
I can see you now.
Okay. Um, I, I think I, I have an understanding because I work in schools, but for those people who don't and for the public who don't work in schools, I think it might be important to, uh, give some examples of situations that are, are not situations we see in our school, but situations that we could see that would prompt a teacher to recommend this kind of a service. Um, because I can think of numerous ones in my head right now from the various positions that I've worked in, but without that experience of actually being in that position, um, I think that would help to, uh, to maybe, um, give some examples that could be, um, relatable to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Laura has her hand up too.
Oh, Laura?
Thank you, Laura Rodriguez. I, I have a lot of questions because I was not involved in discussions on, on this issue before. So when, Herb, when you say, you know, in the third meeting, having somebody from this company, I think that, that would be a really, um, at least for me, that would be very, very valuable to learn more about what this, these services are about. Um, so just very quick questions now that maybe some of you can answer. So the first one, I know this, uh, from the concern from the statement in present to speak about, um, it seemed like there was a concern about parental permission. So if someone could speak to, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, having worked in schools, I'm sure that nothing would happen without a parent's permission, but just to be clear how that works, if something were to happen and a teacher were to refer a student, um, what is the role of parental permission? And then I was wondering about the cost of this service. So what, you know, what would, what is the cost to have these services come into the school? Um, so those are my, those are my first two, um, just trying to get a handle on, on kind of what this is about.
Yeah. I think the last time they were in, they gave us a little figure on the cost. The insurance, I guess they, they take some on the insurance and they have a deductible and all that and- and if someone doesn't have insurance, they do it free of charge, I guess.
Is there a cost?
But they do have a, you know, even though it's a nonprofit, they still have to make money to operate.
I, I just want to chime in and remind the board too, that this doesn't have to be about one program. It doesn't have to be about that particular community-based health center program. There are different options out there. And that's one approach, there's other, I mean, you could buy a social emotional curriculum, and there's some dynamite curriculums that are out there. You could hire a professional on your own. You could, there's a lot of things that you can do, and so I don't, I, I think it's important in your discussion to understand what the options are and what the opportunities are and why you could provide those things and what you can provide and what you cannot provide. And I don't want to get into answering questions, Laura, but I, I think of the parental permission, that totally depends on what you're, you're providing, what program, I mean, there's, you could approve curriculum and there's no permission needed from a parent. Right, there could be a social emotional curriculum that you approve as a board and there's no need for parent permission. Whereas if you could bring out, you know, the other end of that spectrum is you bring somebody in and, you know, that, you know, such is this agency and you would absolutely need parental permission. I would also go to the end and say that some of our, our, you know, our, our school council or our, our social worker, they generally don't talk to students without parent permission, making sure they understand what's going on. So again, that permission thing, we can talk about that in the context and I'd be glad to do a presentation on just social emotional learning, what mental health things are out there, what are other districts doing? And one of that could be a branch of the community based, you know, health center. It is not the only piece, and I want to make sure that maybe I missed that the first time around, is that I didn't share that there are a lot of opportunities in there and it doesn't just have to be that. And so I said, you know, I told the Herb, I, I will own that and make sure that you have the information. If there's a different avenue, that makes more sense. But I, I think it's important that you understand the needs of our students, how many students we're talking about, what their supports, what they could, could potentially have and what they need. But that doesn't have to be just through the lens of that one agency.
Thank you.
I have a question, I have a question that I'd like more information on, Phil. If this might be something that the staff can collect or if not, there might be a source of information, maybe a professional association, but I heard someone describe on northeastern Connecticut last week as a desert for mental health services for children, meaning that a parent was unable to find the services they needed. I don't know whether they were talking about teenagers or younger children. It was, I was not in a position where I was able to ask questions, but it definitely raised a flag that maybe somebody might have to travel a long way to find somebody, anybody, let alone somebody that their child relates to or connects with. I think that if it's very hard to find someone, you might have to take appointments during the day or anytime you might get it and it might interrupt your work. So the two questions of, is there any evidence to back that up? And does it interfere with Wellington students' schoolwork?
The closest headquarters of this outfit is, I think Stafford Springs, they, they have one of, one of their outfits. But as you say, a lot of them are in the eastern, in the western part of the state. I can give you a list of it if you want.
I was actually referring Herb specifically to any type of mental health counseling.
Yeah.
At one point I was looking for a counselor, family member, and I, it was almost impossible to find a person that had an opening in the timeframe I needed it.
Right.
Time ago, and it was not, it was not for an elementary or middle school aged child. So I think that it's, it applies to just the number of providers we have here and the number of hours of services they provide versus the need, so it might be interesting if it's true that there is need in, in our community, specifically for children, and then if there is need, if it affects.
Yeah, well, this, this community health center provides it mostly in the western part of the state and not in, you know, eastern Connecticut, but I don't know what other, what other you know, services are offered by other organizations, you know, maybe there's another community health center that work in, you know, this part of the state. But I think it's.
I would even like to, I would even like to know about private providers and social workers and
Yeah.
who can provide counseling services. I think are not enough appointment slots available within easy driving distance at any cost. Cost is definitely a barrier, but so is time, so is distance.
So that's a very good question, we should find that out. Also, Phil, I think as long as, now that Michelle brought that up, I'd be interested in what we're doing internally on our health services as well. I mean, we must be doing some work in this, in this particular area with the staff that we have, you know, including the teachers, in other words, the, the teachers must have some kind of technique that they're, they've learned in, in school or in practice on classroom management and I would imagine that they've developed effective teaching practices that that service all of the youngsters and and builds up the classroom culture of re, you know, of respect and responsibility. I mean, that's one of the things that I would expect them to do along with whatever subject area, you know, they're, they're working in, so that so that they, they must have some kind of, you know, rules in the classroom and they must be, have some kind of means of controlling youngsters and if they have problems, assisting them in whatever way that they're, that they can. And they must have some kind of rules to, to monitor behavior and things of that kind, because you know, rules are a part of life, I mean, inconsistency is important too. But I would think that in the classroom, that there must be some rules that detect this and also there are things that can be done by a staff member to negotiate and smooth things over. And so then to go on outside outfit is, is fine, but I would like to know exactly what we are doing internally in this respect, because teachers are taught to not only teach the subject matter, but also they have massive job in developing, you know, techniques and promoting classroom decorum and working with the youngsters in the, in the classroom. And I would think that along with their parents, it would be a, a vital part of this whole issue.
Donna has her hand up, Herb.
So I would like to have information on what's going on internally as well.
Yep, definitely.
Okay, whose hand is up?
Donna.
Donna?
Donna Cook. So I have spent a ridiculous number of hours researching this for a variety of reasons. And I probably should have been bolder when this first issue first came up. But I wasn't. And when I was talking to someone in town and they expressed some concerns about our curriculum. And I said, and we were having, it was before our last meeting, I said, you know, we've got a meeting coming up, here's how you can get on, we have present to speak, you can participate and say your concerns, and Phil, I know you rolled your eyes before, but I'm telling you, people don't want to speak when they fear retribution. And I did not speak all the things I wanted to say before because I didn't want to deal with the grief. All right, I didn't want to deal with the backlash. When I'm looking at our board policy under Regulation one three three zero B, number seventeen, it says use of school premises for non-school activities is not permitted during school hours. And this is not a school organization, they are nonprofit, they would be eligible to use our building, but not during school hours. But the saving grace is that people that want to use their, this particular company's program and services can, they provide telehealth. And during this COVID time, we know that our students know how to get on Zoom meetings. So there is nothing, absolutely nothing from preventing a parent from getting in touch with them, registering, they, they'll do, they accept insurance, they'll do sliding fees. I don't know if they'll do free, but they definitely will accommodate the financial aspect. And then the parents can be there, they can monitor it, they can be responsible, they can feel whether it's the right match for their children from the, from the comfort of their own homes. So there's absolutely no reason anybody in Wellington needs to wait to access their services. They can do this on their own right now. It's, it's available. My concern, in addition, you know, I have, I have problems with some of the things that they support. And that way, but that would be between the parent and the student. When they gave the meeting last time, they specifically said that they would be responsible to the Board of Ed. And I can with a hundred percent confidence tell you that I am not qualified to oversee a mental health professional. And based upon the training, and I mean, most of the people on the board are teachers. And that's not a bad thing, but they also are not necessarily qualified to oversee mental health professionals. I think that we would be doing our school a disservice when you start having somebody come in during school hours. We could be opening ourselves up to other nonprofit organizations that want to do something positive for kids that want to have space and all their, all this company was asking for was space that they would accept whatever co-pays, individuals' insurance would, whatever the insurance paid, they weren't going to have any out of pocket for the student, which is definitely a plus. But if we have another organization that wants to come in and offer something that could be positive for our students during the school day where they get pulled out, maybe during lunch or free time, are, are we opening up ourselves for any group that would fit the nonprofit doing something for free to our students? And I, I think that it takes parents out of the loop. They also are, are linked to a medical group that provides all sorts of different medical care and services, but some of them are very inappropriate for free K through eight. And other, other districts across the country are finding out that medical care is being provided to students without parented permission because the parents don't have to give permission. And, and that is a big concern. I think it would be wonderful if the students and parents could go on their website at the CHC, the number one dot com, look at what they provide and inquire, I mean, maybe it's free based upon their personal situation, maybe there's a small cost, but they would be able to do it from home, which be, since ninety-six of our students are doing school from home, they're not going to be coming in to see a counselor anyway. They would be able to do it from home. So that way they wouldn't have to wait till the board sorts everything out and they could get whatever care their parents deemed necessary.
Okay, Donna, thank you very much. Your comments? Any other board member, Phil?
Tracy has her hand up, Herb.
Tracy?
I, I have two questions, or actually one. So I, I, my understanding is that Stafford has this particular service being provided in their district, I think that they said that, is there, did I hear that at the meeting?
It's on the, well, in their, in their booklet that they gave us, Tracy.
So is it possible that we could at one of these meetings have some representative from the special services or something from Stafford who could talk to us about their experience, so we would understand it from the school side versus from the, the organization side? And then my second question is, is those those who are opposed to this, this service, is it opposition to any service from any community, other outside community? Because if that's the case, then it doesn't make any sense for us to be investigating other services outside of our building. And perhaps we need to keep it inside, except that the experts are saying they can't do it, they're saying we need help. And so this is an option. And if we say no to, I mean, to Donna's point, if we open ourselves up to an outside organization, isn't it the board's job to vote whether we let them in or not? And so if we, just because we say yes to this organization doesn't mean that it's grandfathered that any other organization that comes to us, we have to say yes to. Get to have a discussion and decide about it and based on the community's outreach to us over the past, to start six months through meetings. In my experience of being the Board of Ed, I have never seen, not just when I've been on, on the board, but outside of attending meetings, an issue be brought up so many times by people, teachers as well as community members positively saying, we need this. I've only heard one person say they're against it, and if they're afraid to come to our meetings, I don't think that we're that scary, so they should be coming on to say we don't want this, but I have a record in my, in my notes of over twenty correspondents over the past six months saying, please bring this issue up again, so I think we need to come to an understanding here, do we want to ask for outside organizations? Are we opposed to that and we just go internally? But just because it's offered outside doesn't give me enough understanding about why we shouldn't bringing, be bringing an outside organization in because otherwise we have to pay for more staff, which is going to be an issue at budget season. Because our, our social, our special services are saying, Ms. Solona and I can't remember her name at the moment, I apologize. They're saying we need it. The COVID preparation plans are saying social emotional learning is needed, so we need to decide a direction and then we need to move, and I think that's what we're having these meetings for, but I'm, I'm unclear at the moment whether we're deciding about keeping it internal or going outside, but if we're keeping it internal, I think it's going to mean hundreds of thousands of dollars in budget time when we say we need more psych, school psychologists and special, social service, social workers. So I'm sorry, I got a little rant there, but, so my question is, could we have Stafford come in? And then my second question is, I think we need to decide what we're doing as far as internal only or bringing in an outside organization of any sort.
Anne has her hand up.
Anne?
Anne Grosjean, a couple people tonight have brought up the parental piece. And if I remember correctly, nothing would happen with the student until a parent had approved a plan, if I'm not mistaken, and also I think parents had, have the option of referring a child to, so if they feel that they, their child needs some counseling, they also could do. So if they feel that they, their child needs some um, counseling, they also could do that, so I think. We, we really should look carefully at the parent place, piece, but I think that it's probably pretty positive.
Elena has her hand up, Herb.
Elena?
Well, and as, as I remember and I was listening to them very clearly, very, with a great attention. Uh, they need the permission.
I think you're breaking up a little.
And the after, ah, sorry. My connection. As far as. I remember that they need the permission, only one permission, no, sorry.
If you, if you turn off your camera for a second while you speak, we might be able to hear you clearly, it might help.
Okay, okay, thank you, how about this, is it better?
It's a lot better.
Thank you very much for helping, Phil. Uh, as far as I remember. Those services when they had the presentation. Told us that they need permission from parents to not come back for the every suggestion, for the every plan. Whatever they, whatever directions they want to move with the child, they're taking one time permission and after that. Open to work with a child and they deserve my question, which I asked, and that was their question, their reply. So they are not going to confirm their, every direction they want to move in helping a child with the, with parents. So it's really, parents have no control over whatever is going, is, is going to happen around his. That mental help towards their child, thank you.
Thank you, Elena. Michelle?
Michelle Cunningham, I have two points of clarification, one is that uh, no child. Would be able to participate without the parent's approval, so unless the parent agrees. To it, if they don't want to have a, a session where they can't be present and be more in control of how that's happening. Then they don't have to participate, I don't think that's a problem, I think. Some parents would really like to be in the room when that type of service is provided and that's their option if they don't want to, for it to happen that way. I don't think there's anything that says that um, parents would be, that children would be receiving services that parents don't know about. Parents would have to approve of something ahead of time. Um, so, but if they're not in the room, the conversation is, you know, they're not going to be, you know, doing, this isn't family therapy. The other piece I wanted to clarify was that Donna, you had brought up earlier that some of the programs. Um, one in particular that we had had provides other types of services as well, such as they do dental services, they provide medical services. Um, that what we were specifically talking about tonight and what we had talked about earlier this year was only behavioral and mental health. It's not about any medical services, we've never talked about that, we've never brought that up, that would not be something that um, we would. Even consider in this contract under the conversation of what we're having, the conversation is about. Mental health and behavioral health, which does not include physical health in the way I understand the way they separate their services.
But how, how do you, once you let one group in. You know, and, and that way, which I believe is against our policy, which I already gave you, um. What about all the equal access rules where you can't discriminate against somebody coming in and somebody using the facilities? And I think that there's a reason that. Not, a non-for-profit is not supposed to be using our facility during school hours. And those that do are supposed to be paying some sort of fee or rent, not, not necessarily a rent, but a fee to cover. Um, the custodial staff cleaning and, and this is a totally different piece. But in light of all that's going on in COVID and all the efforts to keep cohorts. In, together and segregated from everybody else, now you're going to have one room. With one or two counselors or counselor and a administrative type of person, um, and you're going to have. Who knows how many kids. Going into that one room during COVID where we're making everybody stay away from each other and not, you know, it's. So that's not, the COVID piece isn't why I think this is dangerous, but it's another piece of something that has to be considered. Um, you know, if, if a faith-based group wanted to come in and provide. Services, you know, we probably would say no, th- this is a public school. Um, if the NRA wanted to come in and teach um, with their Eagle Club and teach. Um, firearm safety to our kids, we'd say, sorry, this is a school and. Once you let the, in, in this case, it's this particular group, but if you let this group in, what's. To stop the next step of all the other things they do. And I can tell you in other states, it's happening and it's happened and there's significant ramifications.
I think we have to be very careful because states have different laws between the different states. And in Connecticut, the Board of Education, we have local control of education and therefore we can. Provided through the school, if we have. Um, say for example, we, we have a service that clears the snow off of our backyard, uh, off of our, our sidewalks. We only need one snow removal contract, we don't have to let anybody who wants to shovel snow. Shovel snow for us just because they're competitors with each other. As the Board of Education, we get to choose who the best snow shoveler is. And we pick them and they become our partner or our contractor and then they work with us to make sure that the service is provided. We can provide these services internally, we could hire additional staff to make it happen. When this came across, I thought this was a great option because it was no additional cost to the school. And it was a service that we knew we needed and I think that it's up to us to decide as the Board of Education. Is this a contract we want to oversee? I don't think we need to have any special uh, accountability or, or expertise. We oversaw the contract of the guy who fixed the, the um, the sewage issue. And none of us are experts in plumbing, we don't have to have the expertise to be the policy board to oversee the work that needs to be done. And I don't think there's any issue uh, that you mentioned in terms of equal access that requires us to allow anybody into the schools, whoever we want, whenever we want. As a school board, we choose how and when we partner with the community, it's our decision, it's not up to them to tell us, oh, we want it.
I think there's a difference between having somebody to do a job and having them come in to do it for free. When you hire a contractor, we have to go through the, all those steps, you know, there are certain things that Phil can just have somebody do. There's other times where things have to go out to bid or you have to get more than one bid and, and that way, so there's all sorts of rules. In place and one of the rules in place we have for our building is that no nonprofit organization can use it during school hours.
Is there any other board member that uh, hasn't said, if not, I would turn this over to Phil and ask Phil to. Uh, put something together for us for the next meeting, if everyone's agreed to that, uh, and uh. Can you do that, Phil?
I can, I wrote down a bunch of questions that people asked and I'll, I'll share the questions out with the board. Uh, prior to, so if I didn't get your question exactly right, um, that you can email me back and then um. I don't know, Herb, if it makes sense, uh, I'm not sure or not, if this is a, a, a special meeting that's a more of a workshop, so it's just around this. Um, or if you want to make this uh, part of our next board meeting, that's just a thought.
I don't know, that's a good question.
I just need enough time to be able to make sure I can gather resources and if someone's going to come in and present or it's more.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I think you're, I agree with you, if we have a presenter. Uh, or two, then perhaps we should have a special meeting for that, for uh, and we get the board together for. Uh, discussion purposes on this issue.
Can I ask another? Can I ask for something else, Gracie?
Yep.
Uh, if we're going to have a special meeting, um. At the last meeting, we've only been able to hear from teachers through letters or through present to speak and I um. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I would appreciate if we could have some of our teachers. From each of the buildings who could come and uh, also be a part of the discussion with us so that we could hear from. In our particular community about their needs and concerns.
We already have a letter from them, I think.
Uh, with a conversation that we could have with them, I, you know, is part of our discussion, I think that would be beneficial since they have, have expressed so much.
Okay, if they want to come in, but I'm going to limit them to five minutes, I don't want a long, cause I'm, I'm eating. No, they can make their, their case if they want to.
I'd like to be able to ask them questions though, Herb, and during present to speak, we can't ask questions. If we kept it short per person, would we still be able to have a back and forth?
Yeah, we'll have some, but I, I, I don't think that uh, I'm going to give each one of them a half an hour or something like that.
No, no, of course not.
It'll be, no, it'll be within reason, it's not going to be, we, we'll see how it goes, but we'll, we'll work it out.
And I'm not asking all the teachers, I just the representation from each of the buildings who, who, who would like to, to share with us.
Yeah, that's a good idea, see, we'll do that.
And has her hand up.
Um, yeah, I think a great place to start would be with the needs assessment. And that would be what Tracy's talking about with the teachers and, you know, what we have available to us like Michelle suggested, so if we had. The big picture of what our need is, I think that would be a really good place to start.
Yeah, and I'd like to know what they, I'd like to know what they're doing in, in their classes to handle this, uh, you know. Behavior problem to, you know, see what, I'm sure they, they uh, will provide us with some valuable information. So we'll do that, okay, everyone agree, fine. Mm-hmm, good, thank you. Okay, Phil, um. I guess we're moving on to the next issue.
All right.
Next item, which is the um, memorandum with the staff. Memorandum of Understanding with the staff.
So uh, this is uh, usually you do some sort of memorandum of understanding. When there's something specific going on, uh, that's kind of outside of contract, it's not typical. Um, and this is one of those times with COVID, so um, this is uh, I, I don't know of a district that's not doing this right now, to be honest with you, they're all having these conversations. I met with the union leadership, um, and, and we worked hard on developing a reasonable memorandum of, memorandum of understanding. Um, to address these COVID times and some of the things that uh, we need as, as a district and some of the things that they need as teachers. Um, and, and staff to, to, whether it's about safety or, or just expectation, so. We worked collaboratively for several sessions and we did that um, just together to minimize uh, cost of attorneys. To be frank, um, and, and try and work through and talk out some of the, the challenges around our return. Uh, we spent a lot of time around it, we have a good MOU, I think at this point, uh, this has gone through the Board Attorney. And we did have uh, what I'm going to call a negotiations meeting with, with Herb and Anne, had gone through this with me. Uh, and had a chance to answer questions, the board, um, I'm sorry, the W E A Board brought this in front of their group. Uh, last week and they did approve the MOU as it sits in front of you today. I will say many of the items that are in the MOU are also part of our reopening plan. Um, and basically just the board's approval of this would, would, you know, set, set a level of comfort for those teachers and staff in this union. Um, to know that we're going to uphold what we have in our plan and it's about their safety, safety of students. Um, and so that's what you see in the, the MOU in front of you. Herb and Anne, I don't know if you have anything you want to add.
Yeah, I think uh, you've presented it very nicely, I, I think we have a, a good rapport with the uh. Wellington, uh, with the Wellington Education Association on this, this, under the contract. This uh, particular document, however, if something develops during the year, uh, it can be modified too, it's not. Written in stone, a long shot, but, but it, it does, does protect them and it protects us and uh, protects the children. Anne, you have something to do, who?
Yeah, I agree with you, Herb, I think um, going back to school, I think right now is very scary and very tentative for. A lot of people and I think whatever reassurance we can give them. That every effort is being made to make it as safe as possible is, you know, what we need to do and I feel this document does that. And as Herb said, if something else, we discover something else that might be an issue, we can open it up again and take a look at it with them. So um, yeah, I think, I think it's a good document and, and hopefully will. Um, give them some confidence to, you know, begin this school year and know that they're well protected.
I, I take exception to one thing you did say, Anne, about the youngsters, I, I went by center school. Today and there are a number of classes that were being held outside and the youngsters seem to be enjoying it pretty much, they seem to be uh, pretty happy. And uh, they were scattered all over the place too, it wasn't just one group, they're everywhere, but. It was, it was good that they're back anyway and I'm sure we're doing the best to provide for them. Thank you, man. Any other questions from members of the board?
Donna has her hand up, Herb.
Uh, Donna?
I, I, there's two, one is. On. I think it's item nine. Um, it looks like it might be page thirty-six of our packet, it's kind of cut off. It talks about no parent and or student will be permitted to record the lesson, so is, is that because it's available? Someplace else so that if they want to go back and go over it, they can? Cause that seems, you know, like that, I, I don't understand the problem with that, I can understand them not. Um, recording it and then posting it someplace or selling it or something like that, but just. So that they can.
Yeah, that's.
So can they?
You, you're right, you're right, Donna, it's a privacy issue, so we will, we will still record and we'll post it on our sites. We don't want someone filming and posting it to social media, um, and it maintains the privacy rights of, believe it or not, teachers too. Um, but also the students in that class.
Okay, as long as they have access to it another way, the other thing is, um, there was something that popped up in the news, um, I believe it was just yesterday. And I apologize, I can't find the piece of paper I wrote it on, um. But basically, it was during one of these teaching sessions and a teacher noticed something in the student's room. And instead of picking up the phone and calling the parent. They picked up the phone, they called the police and the police showed up at this, this um, this learning disabled little boy's home. Because of something he had in his room freaked the kid out and upset the parents. Um, I'm not saying that a teacher shouldn't reach out, um, if there's an imminent concern, but. It would seem that there be, should be some sort of policy in place so that the teachers know. What they should and shouldn't do and what the guidelines are so that they're not put in a precarious position. But also that the, the students and their families are not put in precarious positions, um, I think he had a. A zombie buster gum gun or something like that that was a toy and um, and then the police showed up at his house and that was. Not good.
That's a good point, Donna, an added note on that is that. That uh, incident is recorded at the police station and it's there forever, it's not, it's not going to be purged, that's on the boy's record.
So uh, just so the board is aware, all of our staff members are required to be trained, it's a, it's a legal piece they have to do. They have to take the training for DCF, Department of Children and Families, um, and they're mandated reporters and so if they see something. Um, that is either neglect, uh, could be considered neglect or abuse, they are not allowed to make a determination, either. they are not allowed to make a determination either way. They have to report it. They have to report it to their administrator within a certain timeframe. They have to report it to Department of Children and Families and then Department of Children and Families is the one that is responsible for making the determination if it's imminent danger or, or something like that. So all of our staff are trained in that. It was part of our training last week. They were required to participate in. And so it is, it's, it's one of those, you have to maintain the relationship with the family and be reasonable, but you also have the responsibility as a mandated reporter. So I understand where you're coming from on that.
And that's also part of our policy, right? Isn't that, that's in our policy?
Correct.
That, that whole process.
Thank you.
Elena has her hand up, Herb.
Elena, you got it.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions about this memorandum too. So talking about the issue which Donna noticed related to it, in the number, under number twelve, it says that if the student does not show up at the lesson or shows or has a pattern of failing, failing the assignments, then the school communicates with the parents via email. And if the parents do not get back for any reason, then it's already, it takes its, supposed to go on a different level. I, I'm just, my, my question, why we are not considering, why can't we contact with parents by the phone? Because I can skip email. I, it's my problem. Because there are lots of emails and I can just, I don't always roll them all up. So what if the parents is in the same situation and they, he's not aware of the problem? That's my number one question. And then I have another. So, could you say?
Yeah, so we, we agree that emails, the documentation that's written, we cannot necessarily prove the phone call, but we would absolutely call too. Sorry, my phone is going to die and that's how I have Herb, so I'm just going to grab a charger.
Yeah, Herb, you should check your phone battery too. Are you using your, your cellphone?
Yes, I am. I just checked it. I still have seventy-five percent. I, I charged it up before the meeting, so.
Yeah, I think Phil's probably been on the phone all day.
Yeah.
You can ask your next question, Elena.
If this phone dies, I'm, I'm done. Elena will have to take over the meeting.
I hope not. Other question.
Are you back, Phil?
Yep.
Okay.
So my other question is number, is under number nine, I may not, I may misunderstood something. So it says, any teacher who engages in teaching via webcam will not be expected to be in camera view for the length of the class. Does it mean that the teacher has a right, just do not even use a camera? Because I think it's extremely important when the teacher explains something, that the students see the teachers, they really see the person. So doesn't it open the way for the teachers to have their camera off? That's just my concern to this particular question.
No, that's a good question. So the, the reason for that is when they're zooming, they have to be in front of their laptop to be able to zoom. But they're, they're trying to use their microphone system to plug into, which allows them to walk around the room. And so the audio range means, so I'm sitting in front of you right now, but if I want to go over to, you know, talk to someone in a different section of the room, I can't be on camera to do that. So we want them to be a, to have the, the flexibility that doesn't say you have to be directly in front of the camera the whole time. We want you to be able to get up and move around as you're teaching. Absolutely. If I'm going to work with Elena Testa as my student, I want you to see face to face. I want you to connect right here, not be across the room where, where I'm off camera. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but is there a way for us to put it in the words, just to make sure that it doesn't happen that the camera is off? For example, because it's a little bit unclear here.
Elena, it also says that the teacher must have the audio portion of the camera on. So the child at home is hearing the entire lesson and seeing the teacher at points when she's in front of her laptop. But she also has, what, an average of twelve kids in the classroom who are also listening to the same lesson or participating in that lesson in, in the classroom. But the child will always be able to hear her and so she cannot turn off the camera because they must be able to hear her.
Okay, just as long as the video camera is on. That's, that's why.
She may be away from her screen, but the child would still hear her voice and hear what she's saying.
And her camera or his camera would be on, for sure.
So that's my only, so the camera would be on. I understand you can move around, but just as long as it's. And also another, my, sorry, another question. It's nothing serious. It's just my total, my personal misunderstanding. When, when this memorandum is talking about, about bargaining team, where does it say here? I did not, I would like to know who is bargaining unit members? So who are included in that particular bargaining unit members? Members, so members or students, who is included in that bargaining unit? Is it only, are there only teachers? What's the structure of the?
It's the teachers' union, yeah. It's the teachers' union and what happens is the teachers' union, so just so you understand their process. As we talk, you know, as, as I talk to, in any issue that is, you know, going to be moving forward to potentially be in a contract, if I talk to the union or the board talks to the union, they then bring it back to their group. So this is the teachers' union. And so basically what happened in this situation is the, the union leadership, the, their elected leadership are the ones that I spoke with. If there's something that had to do with the union issue right now, that's, those are the people I speak with. And then they took the, the explanations and, and the questions back to their group and they asked questions and they brought feedback back. And then they, you know, once the document is, is quote unquote finalized and they believe that their members believe it's in place, they then vote on it. So it's really the teachers' union with their teacher leadership of the union. And then they bring it back to their group and they vote on it. So that's kind of their group. Those are their bargaining members.
Okay, thank you. And I see my other mark here. I apologize. I said two and that's number three or you know four. So number, under number ten, it says, the board agrees to consider additional MOUs to address issues not in, not envisioned by this agreement. So what's it, what's the abbreviation for that MOU?
So that's this memorandum of understanding. So if something comes up and, you know, we needed another change, we need something that's considered to be contractual and we need to make an adjustment. This is basically saying, and honestly, I don't necessarily believe it has to be in there because we would do that anyways, but it's good practice to put that in there to say, look, if the board sees an issue or I see an issue, I'm going to say to the board, look, we need to go back to this MOU and revisit it, just as they would. If they see an issue with something that's not working or something drastically has changed with COVID, we would want to address that and we would do that together. And that's basically what that's saying.
Okay, so MOU is another name for memorandum of agreement. So it really should be MOA, not MOU?
Yeah, sorry, it, it, yes, I apologize.
Understanding is the word, understanding.
You are correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That's okay, thank you. I just wanted to clear it up for myself because we're responsible.
MOA, yep.
Elena, an example would be if the governor said that everybody has to have one of those screens in front of them, like you suggested, then that might be something that we could go back and get, work into the agreement.
And, but what she's saying is that it says MOA and I wrote MOU, we wrote MOU. It's the same thing, Elena, you're correct though. Thank you for, good catch. I missed that one.
Oh, no, it's okay. I just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, are there any other, any other questions by the board? If not, thank you very much for that information, Phil, and we'll move on to the Wellington Hill Fire Department.
You need to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, right. Okay, I have more, Ann?
I make a motion that we accept the memorandum of agreement or understanding with the Wellington Education Association related to COVID.
I second it, Elena Testa.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions. The motion is passed. Okay, we're moving on now to the Wellington Hill Fire Department lease. This concerns the pavilion out in back of the firehouse. I don't know, everyone has seen it or not. I took a look at it today and it, it looks like it's in good shape except for the roof. It's covered with everything you can imagine, but the inside was very nice and it's pretty large too.
Yeah.
And, so do you want to let everyone know what you're doing in that respect?
Yeah, so, so we started just trying to look for every option available for mask breaks, outdoor instruction. And we happened to look across the street and go, they have a pavilion behind the Wellington Firehouse. And so I approached their leadership and I've been working with the leadership from the Wellington Hill Fire Department to basically use that as an additional space for outdoor learning. You know, they have a pavilion and, and basically Public Works came in to clean it up. I've got the building inspector making sure that, you know, he can sign off on it. Well, Public Works has done a couple of things or actually they've done several things. And on the side note, I just have to say that for Public Works, Troy, that his, his crew and Troy himself, they have spruced up a ton of stuff, both at Center School, the Firehouse, Hall School, they've cut down a tree for us. They created outdoor learning space. They've just been tremendous. But they basically went in and emptied for the fire department. They, they used that for their barbecue pit. They cleaned out the space. They brought in some, some stone to, to cover it. They've reinforced a couple of the rafters. I'm meeting with the building inspector in Troy tomorrow morning to see if there's anything else that we need to do. Basically, you can get to this by walking down the sidewalk at Center School along the fence line and basically just walk into the grass. And what I've done is in talking with their, their leadership, we're looking at using two spaces. And that's what this lease is really providing, is, is allowing the Center School staff with their students to access two spaces. One is Twenty-Four Old Farms Road, which is that Wellington Hill Firehouse and the pavilion. And there's grass next to the pavilion. And then Twenty-Five Old Farms, which is the, the land that was across the street. And use their, their blacktop space as long as we cone it off and then we still provide access to their building. And they have a ton of grass space out there for, for outdoor education if our staff needed an extra space. And to be honest with you, it might help with recess to allow kids to spread out and, and not worry about being right near each other in, in our zones that we have marked off right now. Parents would absolutely have to sign off on this. All Center School parents and his parents that would want to allow their child, this is, I've run this by the attorney. This is, he helped create this lease agreement and I've run this through the leadership at Wellington Hill as well. They are, they're satisfied with this. And so basically a parent, we'd do a field trip permission slip, but it would be a blanket one. And it would basically allow us to use those facilities for outdoor learning as long as they don't need that space and that, they have to communicate that to us. And, you know, it would basically provide an extra sheltered space for us, which is fantastic. The one area Herb mentioned was there's a section of the roof that's missing. This is meant to be a shaded space, not necessarily, you know, covered from rain. It's not why we're going over there. It'd be additional space where we could put chairs down or kids could sit on, on their mats and have, take off their masks, have some outdoor instruction or have a mask break. And it's just, it happens to be close and it's, it's really reasonable. So again, the sidewalk leads directly to it. If you want to cross Farms Road, at that point, if students wanted to cross the road right there, obviously they have to do it with a teacher. The teacher would walk them straight across the road into the grass area that is right there, phone out, just.
That they're going out there? And what kind of security do we have? Do they have telephones with them or, how are we handling that?
So we have portable radios, walkie-talkies that are, you know, both in school and if someone goes outside. You know, I know the PE teacher has, would love to teach in the grass space that's over at the, at the Firehouse area. And they have walkie-talkies. They have to, if they go outside, they grab a first aid bag and a portable radio.
Okay.
Portable radio is what our administrators carry. Whether we're at the Firehouse or we're on the playscapes, there are protocols that our staff has to follow. And I'm not going to go into detail on what they are, but they have protocols, have communication methods to get administrators and other staff members.
Okay.
And we, we wouldn't send kids alone. We would have to bring the whole group.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Donna Cook has another question.
Donna?
Yeah, Phil, because the kids are going to be off the school property, even though the parents have signed a permission slip, does there need to be any additional insurance? Or does the insurance company need to be notified that we're using this other space on a semi-regular or regular basis? Just so that if someone were to get hurt, that everything's covered, just as if it would be on the property, school property? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question. I talked to Kerma, who does our insurance. And basically part of this lease agreement is that we would provide a, a copy of our district's, our town insurance to them and we are covered. He said, no problem. I showed him a, a picture of where these two spaces were. He said, absolutely no problem. As long as, you know, we're, we're, we would have the sign off, number one. And number two, that because it's so close and we can provide that certificate of insurance, we're good to go. Nothing additional needed.
The lease is for how long a period, Phil? One year?
Yeah, good, we did it for the year because we just don't know. Obviously, if there's a foot of snow, we're not going to trudge over across the street or anything like that. And, you know, if something changes, we, we would adjust.
Is there any fee, any fee associated with it?
None.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is, with the Public Works cleaned up their space for us.
Yeah.
We've had a little cost just to make that happen, but nothing compared to what it would cost to build what they have. Not even close.
Okay, now do you need a motion by the board on this or?
I, I.
To move ahead in the lease?
Vote on this and then you and I could sign it, Herb, if it passes.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, can we have a motion to accept the lease?
Michelle Cunningham, I move that we accept the lease between the Wellington Board of Education for Twenty-Four and Twenty-Five Old Farms Road.
Thank you. And, Ann?
Elena Testa seconded.
Okay, Elena. Any further discussion relative to the mo? The motion is passed. We are now down to the Wyndham Public School Food Service Payroll Review.
Yeah, so you have to, you have to basically approve the next layer of salaries for our food services staff. I see Donna holding something up. Sorry, did you need that?
Someone texted me that they're trying to get into the meeting and I tried to chat Catherine, but the chat was disabled.
Poor Catherine keeps getting booted out as her host, so.
Are you back in the meeting again?
Catherine, I'm not sure if she's back in or she's frozen, but.
She's frozen.
She's frozen, yeah.
Let me see if I can.
I wanted to put it in the chat so it wouldn't be disruptive. I couldn't do that either.
I, I will see if I can get. No one's in the waiting room?
No.
No.
I thought that was her. Okay. This, a union, they don't, they're not negotiating their contracts, so you adjust their salaries on an annual basis. The hard thing about this is that minimum wage really is kind of taking away some of your ability to do that. As minimum wage goes up each year, several of these folks are making well under minimum wage. So as it goes from eleven dollars to twelve dollars on September one, you, you just don't have a choice. Uh you you just don't have a choice, so uh you have to go to that twelve dollars an hour. Next year, you'll have to go to thirteen, so um and it's, you know, up to fifteen dollars an hour as 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 we move forward. So my suggestion is, um some of these folks have changed roles. Um and as they've changed roles, the 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 they're uh, it's just like going from a teacher to an administrator, there's there's different levels of responsibility. So my suggestion would be if they went. Twelve dollars an hour, that you would do that. Anybody that is already at the twelve dollars an hour would get a uh the same increase as a W E S S member, which is the non-certified union. Which was two point seven five, which for some of these folks is pennies, uh several of them is pennies. And then the folks that um I'm responsible for hiring, such as the Food Services Director, I and uh I've already squared them away and they're in the same range. So it's basically two point seven five or the minimum wage range. And without getting into their individual salaries, uh I don't know if you have any questions if I was clear about that.
Okay, everyone's um satisfied with uh Phil's explanation? There was a two point seven five? Bill?
Correct, if they are um already making minimum wage, that's the increase that they would receive, if they were not. So just to give you an example, if if someone was making eleven dollars and ten cents an hour, they were, they would be bumped to twelve dollars an hour. Um because that's minimum wage, but they would not then get the two point seven five, they would only get the bump to the twelve dot. Seven five.
Okay, do can I uh hear a motion from the board on this?
Sure, Michelle. I move that we adjust the wages as recommended by two point seven five or to minimum wage. We need a time like, timing on that, a date? Div.
Today.
Effective today.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's seconded by Anne, any discussion? Any comments?
You know what, you could also, Michelle, as the interrupter, you could do the twenty twenty one school year.
Okay, that that that's better, um so family amendment uh to the motion.
You're modifying the motion.
Is accepted to modify it to apply for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Aye, all opposed? Abstentions, the motion is passed. We are now down to all business, which is a twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school calendar.
All right, this this is my mistake, I believe, um I'm not sure how we missed this. Uh we oh we were matching region, all the region, Region Nineteen, um Mansfield, Ashford, Columbia, and somehow I put April vacation on the wrong week. We have it scheduled for April vacation being on the twelfth, and then I had a parent say, why are you in the world, are you not on the same week as eh as Region Nineteen? And I said, ah, so all I'm asking you to do is allow me to update the calendar to reflect that April vacation would be the week of the the following week, which would be the week of the nineteenth. Which would match the region, and and that was my mistake, I apologize.
Okay.
Right in the calendar. No, there there's a mistake on it.
Where are you looking?
Look, look.
Laura, here.
On here.
Laura, you have a question?
Go ahead, Donna. Go down, go down to your April vacation, you didn't change the dates in the box, you only changed it on the calendar.
Right, we'll change both to match it, I she only changed it to show where it would be.
Okay.
It's gonna, both will be the the nineteenth to that end of the week, correct? Minor change, my apologies.
That's okay.
Okay.
You need a motion, Herb.
Yeah. Are we ready to move on the accepting the calendar? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your your hand?
We don't have a motion yet.
Oh, I thought we had a motion on that, okay, Michelle, come on.
I move that we adjust the calendar to reflect the April nineteenth, April vacation date uh to match the Region Nineteen vacation.
Tracy Anderson, I second that.
Okay, it's seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand?
Aye.
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 The aye, all opposed? Abstentions? Herb Erica. Okay, the motion passes. Present to speak. Okay, we're open to, present to speak, if we have a uh. Citizens out there that want to say a few words, Phil?
Anybody on camera, if you want to raise your hand, if you're not on ca camera and you want to be, pop on and raise your hand. If you're not on camera and you uh want to speak, you can also raise your hand, uh just through the participant participants area, Sarah Smith has her hand up.
Sarah Smith?
You know what, you might be, hold on, Sarah.
I think Phil, Phil, you might be the host now, somebody has to.
Yeah, it's gone four fifteen times, so.
Yeah.
Sarah, you should be able to.
Yeah.
There you go.
Um I I was very pleased with the board's decision to discuss the main um part of the agenda and um to listen to everybody. Um I want to thank everybody that um worked at this diligently and you know who you are. To bring this uh back to the attention and I appreciate people listening to each other. Um I am so proud of all of you because this beginning of school seems to have gone quite well. And uh from the bottom of my heart, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you very much.
Uh Erica. You.
Thanks, Phil.
There you go.
Um Erica Witinski, First Select Woman, um two things, one, I want to uh thank Superintendent Stevens. He met with um the our Elections Department, uh myself and our Public Works Director to discuss moving our polling place to Hall School to allow for safer. Uh social distance in-person voting in November, so I want to thank you for working with us for that to um come to fruition. And um after almost six uh long months, it was nice to drive by uh Center School today, didn't make it by Hall School. Um and and see uh kids and staff outside, I know this doesn't come um without some uh hesitation on parts. Um but we wish uh happy and healthy productive year to uh fill you, your staff, um and and all of your students. So thank you for all of your hard work on on getting everyone back into your buildings.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Erica, we appreciate your comments, thank you.
Bryn Lipscrew?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, first, uh Bryn Lipscrew, third grade teacher at Center School, also W E A co-president. And um I would just like to um publicly thank um our superintendent for um the collaboration that we had working on that M O U. Um you know, we worked many hours on it, um both in front of the screen and uh you know, office screen, um to come up with with the agreement and uh thank you to the board for approving that. Um also, I would like to um thank the board for putting back on the agenda, the conversations of the um. Social emotional um learning and health of our students and uh potentially looking at programs to bring into the school. I sat in on the March meeting when that was first presented um by the outside organization and have also communicated with the board and um it's nice. Um I appreciate it that it's back on the agenda and will continue to be a topic of conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else, if you would like to speak, please click your participants tab and you can click raise hand under your name, over your name. Going once, going twice. Sold to Herb Erica, Herb, it's all you.
Okay, uh we're back to uh board comments. Um. I just want to say, Phil, that we appreciate all that you've done and the staff have done to get schools going uh right at the beginning of the year and. Uh hopefully, everything's going to go fine, right now, it looks good, everything's in place and we appreciate, we really appreciate all of your work. Uh also, um we, I just want to mention that we have uh uh committees and one of our board members is not on the committee and we can't let that happen. Uh Laura, our new member, is uh doesn't have the luxury of working on um multiple committees, so that's something I'm going to have to address. I don't know how we're going to handle that because everyone is so comfortable on the committee they have at the present time. It will mean some shifting around if any board uh. Wants to stay on the committee they're on because they love that committee, I uh we'll have to figure out a way of of getting this information to uh. Can we try to handle that, Phil, or how are we going to do that?
We can, we can send out the committee list of what's there and put it back on the agenda if you want, Herb.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then I know that we, you wanted to schedule meetings for uh the year, we can do that at the same time.
Okay. And we have that special meeting, the next regular meeting will be October thirteenth, okay? Okay, who's first? Anne? Angela first?
It must be because I begin with A. I'd like to welcome the new, the new um staff members to Wellington. And also thank um Phil and the administrators and the teachers for the wonderful job they did getting everything going at this difficult time. I have two grandchildren and they both had a banner day today, they just had a wonderful day, so thank you all so much.
Elena?
Sorry, Laura. Yeah, Elena Testa, well, first of all, I really want to thank Phil for coming out with a decision for Herb in the beginning of the meeting, we were all uh really lost a little bit, thank you. That was a, your experience really served us, thank you very much. And also again, I just want to um to give the word of hope, I do believe that we're going to be okay. That uh the town and the whole COVID situation are going to be okay, and I know it's so much negativity, but I just want to encourage everybody, let's believe that one, well, we know. We don't believe, we know that there will be one day when it's all going to be behind. And we will learn a lot, and hopefully, uh nobody will get sick in our town, we're just praying to God so he would keep us safe. But let's just don't, don't, nobody, I just encourage everybody, don't get upset and uh let's be positive. Uh that the schools are open, it's wonderful and we are praying so they would stay open. And children would stay healthy and well and everybody who works there. So and thank you again for everybody who worked so hard on making this for, helping the schools to reopen. A lot of work was put into it, thank you, everyone, thank you, Phil, thank you, everyone, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh Tracy?
Yes, I'd like to agree with Elena and Anne so far and um about welcoming the the new staff and um. Welcoming everybody back to school, it is a, it truly is, makes it all worth. When you see the kids again, I think Herbert talked about it before, but being in a school building and having kids back in a school building is truly what this is all about. And it's wonderful to see. I just like to thank Phil for all the tireless hours you have spent in the past six months. You as well as your staff, but you especially, all the meetings you've been in and um. And uh appreciate that you you can't do everything, so perhaps um. Perhaps we need to give you some aid in some way in the next budget season to uh to hire a a facilities manager so that you don't have to have all the hats on your head for everything. And I hope we have a really good school year, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Uh Donna?
I don't know if there's a whole lot I can add to what Laura even said. Um I would like us to hopefully continue with um some of the creative stuff like using the Firehouse yard and across the street, even when this whole thing is done. For flexibility and to get the kids outside more, um and to give the teachers a little bit more room to be creative and. So some of the, some of the good things um that have come out of these challenging times, hopefully, we can hold on to those, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Donna, Michelle?
So it's really always exciting in September when school opens and I think that Anne, you touched on it when you said it's it's also a little uh trepidatious for parents. Um so I want to uh send a warm uh thank you to all of the parents in Wellington who put their faith in us for overseeing the school system. We have been working uh tirelessly over the summer to get ready and thank you to Phil for leading your team um to do the, an amazing amount of work this summer. Ready for school, there are lots of districts who were not ready today. Um and you know, hats off to you for for and your team for being able to get us to this point. It's up to all of us to stay safe and to be safe and to be masked up all the time so that we can continue to provide services day to day. Um and it it's going to take everybody in town working together to be safe. Um because we're really not masking to keep ourselves safe, we're masking to keep everybody else safe, including all of our teachers and staff, so thank you for that. Um I'd like to uh thank my colleagues for, on the board, for a relatively civil conversation. I was a little worried at the start of the conversation when we were having a conversation about the roofing project, that things were going to go south. I thought the tone there was really um a little accusatory and I think it's essential for us as a board that deliberates in public. To have a conversation and not think the worst of the motives of everybody else at the table. I think we're all here because we believe in education, we believe in the kids and the families of our town and we want to support them. We believe in the staff and we believe in Phil Stevens as our leader of the group, so I think we have to bring that to the table and give everyone the benefit of the doubt that we are all operating in uncertain times. And it's difficult to communicate over Zoom, I would hope that we would maintain the same very professional, calm and open-minded perspective in future conversations as we move forward.
Okay, uh keep in mind, we do have a, we'll arrange a special meeting and Phil or Brenda will be in touch with you on that. Our next, our next regular meeting will be October thirteenth.
You didn't let Laura go. Laura.
Oh, Laura, I'm sorry.
Okay, you 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 talked about.
I don't know how that that happened, I had a a list here too.
It's okay, it's okay, you you mentioned.
We'll give you, we'll give you all the time you want now. Give you until ten, until ten o'clock.
So, yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, that's okay, so I'm looking forward to being on a committee also, so um. I guess um certainly I want to just reiterate what pretty much everybody has said to thank the staff, administration, um all all of you for an amazing job getting this all together to start school today. Especially to you, Phil, who I I think you probably have not slept all summer, I I don't see how you. I I don't see how you could have um with all the hats that you have worn and everything that you've had to do. Just the hours prepping to get these schools open. Um, definitely want to welcome the new staff members and I, I do not remember the names. They're, they're going too fast for me to write down. Um, but welcome, welcome to Wellington, it's it's a one, I really appreciated um Herb that that you well, I guess in all of us, decided to continue this this discussion about our students and their mental health needs and looking for what is the best solution for our district to address um their mental health needs and and their social emotional learning, um which is so very important. Um, also, just, you know, want to focus on our successes. Um, and I agree, I I was a little concerned at one point using terms like failure. Um, I just don't think that really belongs here, especially with the amazing work that people have done this whole summer. Um, and 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 that's it, I'm just, I'm so glad it's another school year. I am, I'm missing myself being in a classroom with young children, I'm online with college kids, which is a lot of fun but incre- very different, very different from being in the classroom.
Oh, that is.
So.
Thank you, Laura. Thanks. Okay, I'll um adjourn the meeting at uh nine fifty-nine. And uh, everyone stay healthy and uh we'll see you in a few weeks, probably.
Take care.